I call this meeting to order. Please silence your electronic devices so we can conduct our business and stand for the invocation given by Councilmember Canal.
Please join me in the Lord's Prayer if you wish. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy coming to come, and it will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and for whom is our trust rest; and so we forgive those who have sinned against us, and lead us not into temptation, but to deliver us from them. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You should have been provided a copy of the February 2022 financials, and you should have had a chance to look them over. Did anyone have any concerns or questions or reference to those? Are we all in approval to accept the February 2022 financials?
Yes.
You've also received the month of March 2022 minutes. You should have been able to look at those. Those are also in your packet. Do anyone have any additions, subtractions, questions, concerns, reference to those minutes? Okay. Are we in approval of those?
Yes.
We have a few agenda items today. Item 32, 2022, the six-month contract extension for the client-first project management. Who looked at it? Mr. Guinness. 33, 2022, historian addition of compensation. Mr. Richmond. 34, 2022, the resource officer agreement. Ms. Schmidt. And the temporary detective position, 35, 2022, Mr. Vili. Sorry, I can't get everyone included.
That's all right.
Communications, UMMC.
The Rochester Regional Health UMMC Foundation submitted an application for a lemonade stand fundraiser on Thursday, June 23rd, from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. in Centennial Park.
Any questions or concerns on that application? Okay, and the next one?
And Kuanis submitted their application for their annual Easter egg hunt on Saturday, April 16th, at 9:00 a.m. in Centennial Park.
Okay. Any questions or concerns on that one?
A set.
Okay, thank you. The next city council conference meeting will be held Monday, April 25th, 2022, 7:00 p.m., City Hall, Council Boardroom, second floor, city center. City Attorney, do you have anything to report?
Nothing specific.
Okay. City Mayor?
Thank you, Council President. Just a quick note on the state's budget that was passed either last night or early this morning. I wanted to report that the AIM aid remains unchanged from last year at 1.75 million. It looks to be that VLT funds are included in the state budget. As you'll recall, we did not use those in our operational budget, so that's an opportunity for potentially one-time purchases, for overruns, or for special programs throughout the year. Transportation funding, from what I've been able to ascertain, there is a higher amount of chips this year, the same as last year, so we may be able to get another street done in this year. There's also 100 million in extreme winter recovery funding and state touring arterial aid funds. There's also a new fund called the Pave Our Potholes, POP, program. So we'll be determining what that is and how we can possibly take advantage of it. There is minor changes in bail reform in discovery. There is more water and sewer infrastructure funding, an additional 500 million for drinking water and wastewater infrastructure. And I believe that Restore New York, which is a grant program the city and building owners have taken advantage of in the past, was in the budget again this year, and it helps us address vacant and abandoned properties. It might be a program for the Brisbane mansion when it comes time to move out of that. I'd also like to introduce Rhonda Salisbury, the city's assessor. I asked her to come in just to give us a few brief remarks on the reevaluation for this year. Thanks, Rhonda.
Good evening, Council. For anyone that doesn't know me, I'm Rhonda Salisbury, the city assessor, have been for 12 years. So I guess I'd like to just remind everybody that assessments only change for two reasons. One is equalization, meaning sale price to assessment ratios are growing apart, and the second is for physical reasons, meaning something's changed with the property, either something was taken away or something was added of value. The culmination of a year-long project is, of course, an assessment update. This year, we're in the thankless position to be in our fourth year in a row with really high increases across the board throughout the county, including the city, of course. We started out with a plus four, meaning that our ratios were off 4% and above four years ago, and then we got a plus six, another plus six this year was plus 11. Just to kind of put that in perspective, in years past, the city was either a zero or a plus one for probably--
We can't hurt--
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry. So the city's growth has grown exponentially over the last four years, which in itself is a good thing, but in my position, not a good thing. So basically, now that we've posted the preliminary assessment, sent out the notices, people have multiple options to reach out to myself or go to grievance day. So once the notices go out, there's a lot of information on those inserts that we put in there. All the information is on the city website on the assessment page, it's on the county website on the city's part of the county database. People can feel free to reach out to myself, my staff, if they have questions. We can send them out what's called a market document. For anyone who got an assessment increase, we can show you the five sales that we actually used for your home or your business. It's not throwing darts at a dartboard, as some people may think. It's actually quite a science, and it's all based on our assessment to sale price ratio throughout the year. So when you have 300 or 400 residential sales in particular, that the sale price is 40, 50, 60, $80,000 above the assessment, we then have to do an assessment project. So we have a contract with the state to review assessments every year. It doesn't mean we change them every year. Unfortunately, in the last three years, it's forced us to change them every year because we want to get that municipal parcel aid that we will be rewarded with this year for maintaining 100% and following that cyclical plan that we signed up for. So that's pretty much it in a nutshell. Does somebody have any questions for me?
So that's why it went up two years in a row is because the threshold was hit and then it triggers this, or--
That's correct. We have an annual contract with the state. You can do, we have a cyclical plan in place with the state, which allows us to apply for and receive municipal parcel aid in the third year of the cycle. So this year is that year, and we'll be able to apply for that. Last time, I think it was about $18,000. I know it's not a huge amount in the scope of the city, but $18,000 is very helpful, and we can put some of that money back into the functioning of the assessment process. So once we are 5% off those ratios, the sale price to assessment ratio, that's when we have to look to do a project. So if we're between 95 and 100%, we can claim 100%. Anything below 95, our equalization rate would drop. That's, you know, when we create problems with the state and our data's not updated, we're not equalized, and it just kind of throws the whole assessment role into just kind of a nightmare of, you know, undated information. So we pursue it yearly, hope to not change yearly, but we're in a cycle now where we've got a few years in a row of such increases, we just can't ignore it.
Yeah.
Yes.
Now, if sales drop, okay, we just did a reassessment, but if the sales drop, like let's say values drop 8%, will that trigger another reassessment?
We, so that's the same, the state guideline is the same thing. We have to maintain assessments at market value. We're at 100% market value, so if the sales were actually to dip, most people don't believe me, but if they did, we would have to adjust to those also. So--
Up or down? It's not always up.
Well, in our case, it has been up, and we want it to be up or to be flat. I've never experienced anything where we had to reduce. I had a situation once on State Street where I did reduce the first section of State Street because the sales were really, you know, we were going through kind of an overturn of foreclosures right in there, so I did do a little reduction. Had a situation, I think, on Kibbe South Side when the flood insurance problems were first happening. I didn't actually reduce, but we maintained. So it's all, so we're lucky we have such a large market here. We have 300 to 400 residential sales. It's actually a pretty easy place to run the data because we have a lot of sales. So that's why we separate them out into neighborhoods. Not all neighborhoods receive an increase every year. The last two years, we've had to, but we have, like, neighborhood 100, 9% on average, 217, 310, 416, 512, 621 to 22, 720. So generally, we're rotating the city's neighborhoods. We usually have several flat, so to speak, neighborhoods, as in we still have sales, but they're just not above the assessment. So it kind of gives people a little bit of a break, a rotation that's not, it's not purposeful, it's just incidental to the market, but we haven't been able to do that in the last two years.
Rhonda, I appreciate and understand everything that you're saying, but I've had some phone calls from some concerned constituents of mine that said, you know what, I bought into it last year, I understood the fact that the housing market went crazy, and therefore we have to, you know, we have to adjust the value of our homes as well. And a lot of our, a lot of my constituents got some really pretty rich hikes, okay? And they stomached them. And now those same people are calling me this year and saying, you know, I thought last year we were up to 100% market value. You can't tell me, I'm an intelligent man, you can't tell me that the housing market has gone up that much more since 2021, you know? And, you know, they have a good point, because I do watch, I watch the real estate market almost on a daily basis because it's something I enjoy doing. And I, you'd have a hard time convincing me that, that the value of the houses went up that much in one year. People are starting to see things settle down a little bit and kind of even out, so it's kind of visible to people that watch that. And then to be told that now my house is much, bring it up to 100% value, now you've got to raise me another $25,000. So those are the kinds of concerns that I'm getting, and I know you're, you're walking around with a target on your back right now, and I wouldn't want to be you, and unfortunately, a lot of people think you're the one that's making these decisions.
I know they do.
Very important that the public realize that, no, you're basically the messenger. You're hired to do a job, you're, you're conducting the way you do your job by state requirements, and the numbers come out the way the numbers come out. And I think the public needs to understand that Rhonda's not the one that's, that's making the rules here, so.
I definitely agree. I think you'd be--
And like I've explained to my constituents, she also is a taxpayer too, so she's affected as well. So I, but it's, it's just difficult to try to understand how my house can be worth that much more this year than it was last year when it already took a huge hike.
That, that would be the single most, well, one of the most difficult parts of my job, but the data, if you look at our neighborhood data, if you look at the sales that we have, which is a lot of information I could share with you guys, you'll see how crazy it is that those, those percentages are actual. They're really there. You know, if you see something that didn't sell, it's because you had a very unrealistic seller, there's something wrong with the house. Because what we're doing is we're looking, we're always, we always have outliers that we invalidate. A super-high sale, we can say, was an uneducated buyer seller. Super-low sale is genuinely a distressed property, something was really seriously structurally wrong, didn't pass inspection, so they had to make a massive reduction. Or it was a flat-out foreclosure, which is not considered a valid sale to us. So it's, it's a good and bad situation. It's wonderful to see the growth in the city finally matching the rest of the county, but the byproduct of that is my job, the assessments equating to tax, which is very, a very difficult thing for me to explain because I can't guess what you guys, county legislature, or the school boards are going to do with their budget, their levy, and their tax rate. So, but I, I know we all, we need to work on this together, and I thank you all for being very helpful. I've gotten phone calls from many people that you personally told to call me, and I'm actually glad you had them call me, so I can explain it one-on-one because each neighborhood, each house, each situation is very different.
I think it's, it's disgrace. It's sad that the state's letting people this time, with national fuel double, national grid double, gas trouble, groceries, roads, I am. It's very sad that they're letting people-- Because I can-- But it's--
I, I agree.
It's my fault. It's so stupid that they're doing that to people.
It's, um, you know, it's--
What it is.
Well, not to mention that our state budget is at, like, historic levels, larger than some other states' budget, and, you know, how do you put that into comprehension?
It's very bad timing, and, you know, people are suffering, people are struggling with, you know, the pandemic, their finances, maybe their job, their children being home for so, you know, there's so many things feeding into it, and I'm the one person that they can get a hold of and talk to. I do my best to explain it, and, you know, we, we have New York State real property, real property tax law for a reason, and unfortunately, New York State, as everybody in this room knows, is a heavy homeowner tax burden state, you know? So we have to follow those guidelines, or then we're in breach of contract with the state. It's kind of a vicious cycle, for sure.
Rhonda, if I could, just a note, and anyone that got the assessment updates, it spells out exactly, you know, after you get over the shock, exactly what you can do to get an informal review. And those are due by April 22nd, 2022, but the, the document walks you through that, and if you don't have access to online or the computer, you can call the assessor's office--
Yes.
So, so there is that, those steps that residents absolutely need to look at and to take, and Rhonda and her assessment clerk, Vicki, are always willing to help residents understand the process and to go through the informal review with them so they can be prepared for that. And then there's the last step that they could also take, which is to come to grievance day.
That, that's correct, but people still have a timeframe. If they miss the cutoff for an informal, that's okay. The reason there's a cutoff of April 22nd is we have to post the tentative assessment roll on May 1st. So as an assessor, I am free to make assessment changes that I deem legitimate between the date that those notices go out, right up until I'm filing, filing the tentative roll, but when we have hundreds of informal reviews, we need some time to process them and make decisions. If somebody misses that date, it's really not anything to panic about. They still have a whole month to come in here, call me. They can still get together with me and do the process of an informal, just the paperwork's a little different. And like she was just mentioning, we actually have a very good network of people down in the city clerk's office, and everybody is supportive of the process and being on the same page with what we explain to people, handing out the paperwork. Vicki and I have, I've personally dropped paperwork off to people who are elderly and homebound. We'll mail it, we'll email it, we'll send it with a friend, a relative, a neighbor, we'll drop it up, whatever we need to do. My goal is that nobody ever feels as if they didn't have an opportunity, so.
Yeah. Feedback, everyone I've sent to you, Rhonda's been very happy with your explanation, but--
Thank you.
The feedback is basically, people don't trust their government anymore. I had a friend Saturday, I met with him, and he spent about 10 minutes screaming at me. He just said, guarantees, I'll bet you $100 right now, that you people don't reduce your budget enough, that my taxes stay the same. And I said, well, there's three entities in here, you know? And I said, we set our budget, we're very conservative in the city and all that, but I says, there's other entities I'm not going to speak for, but they just, they've lost trust in their government, and they've seen it and heard it before, and yet their individual tax bills keep increasing, and their homes, they need to do more work on them, they need furnaces and new windows and all that, and they're starting to say, you know, wow, the guy the other day, it's starting to look real good, he's going to move down south, he's just fed up with the whole state. I can't believe it.
Hi, Rhonda. I don't, I mean, I could reiterate what John said and probably what Bob said. I'm getting calls, I'm getting screamed at. I'm disappointed myself. My daughter was furious. Her house needs a roof, it needs everything. She went up last year 17,000 and 26 more thousand this year, and she hasn't put a nickel in her home.
It's crazy.
So help me to understand if this is a New York State law. Is it all over the state, and is every place in the state assessed at 100%?
They are not. That's an excellent question, and we're actually glad you asked that. So a couple things, as to your daughter's point of not doing anything to her home, that's what I was saying about the difference between an equalization change, which is just basic overall market data, sale data, and then physical change. So a lot of times, people have a hard time comprehending that their assessment can go up, whether they made an improvement or not, because you're appreciating. If you're doing general maintenance, you want your property to appreciate, but you don't want the side effect of 21% and then your taxes change to reflect that. So that's, that's like a huge chunk of that. And I'm sorry, I forgot the second part of your question.
Just New York State--
Oh, yes.
Is the law--
Well, the law is you have to maintain assessments at the same equalization, meaning commercial, residential, industrial, recreational, vacant land, they all have to be. You can choose to not be at 100%, but each part of your assessment role has to be at 90% or 50%. You have a lot of downstate communities that don't do assessment updates at all, and they're at 5%. You have an assessment of $2,800, but your tax rate is several hundred dollars a thousand or several thousand dollars. So you lose track of, you know, 8% of what? It's kind of crazy. So Genesee County as a whole has been in the habit of maintaining 100% value so that we can keep that data as up-to-date and accurate as possible, because we're sending out something called sale verification forms, and we're really looking to see how everybody fits in with those sales in that neighborhood. And unfortunately, you know, the byproduct of being at 100% is we change a lot, but it means that it's more fairer. So Jill and I had this conversation the other day, that if we didn't change assessments, let's say we didn't do an assessment update in the last five years, and all these massive high sales hit, the people that bought a house for $400,000 that was assessed for 280 are still paying tax on 280. And all the people who truly are 280 are still paying the same tax. So there, there's a disconnect between that unequalization of the sale properties, we can't change the assessment unless it's an update year. So they linger in there, hundreds and hundreds of people in the city are paying tax on an old assessment.
Do you know how long we've been in it? Because I think we didn't used to be at 100%--
As long as I've been here, 12 years we have. We had one year, the first year of COVID, where you guys graciously chose to postpone the update. So we went from 100% to, I believe, 98. So it didn't change your tax collection at all, because you get that extra 2% added back in there, but the problem is the longer you do that, the less good the data is, you know, the less verified the data is for each parcel. And my goal with meeting with all these people at this time of the year, all these property owners, hundreds of them, is to sit with them and show them what we have on file, because my data is only as good as what they verify and help me maintain. So that's why I kind of like the rapport, not that I want to do an assessment update every year, but I enjoy the process that I get to verify my data with each person that chooses to come in and see me. And I show them everything that we have, and I ask them, is this correct to your knowledge? Would you believe this is correct? Most of the time it is, but occasionally we find something that's wrong, and it gives me an avenue to correct it. So we want to be at 100%, and we get that parcel aid back if we're at 100% and we do yearly or cyclical reassessments. It's actually, my opinion, if you ask assessors statewide, it's the best thing to do, is to be at 100%, because you know your data's good.
I think my fear is people won't put money into their home, and they don't drive by and raise their assessment.
I hear, I hear that also. I have--
And I also think it's going to scare people to move, and who's going to move? Is the people paying all the taxes, us?
Yes. It's very heavy on property owners.
People leaving New York State in droves, and you can't sustain that for much longer.
It's, um--
You can only pay so much in taxes before your tax core, and you can't even put the move on your house, so--
Exactly.
I know it's very exciting to everybody I've seen, myself and other bands members, too, because my constituents as well.
It's very disturbing all the way around, isn't it? Assessor group, you should see some of the meetings that we have with the state and our New York State Assessors Association. I've seen people that practically were in fisticuffs over this conversation. You have assessors standing and shouting at the New York State Office of Real Property officials, and you just sit there going, oh, there's got to be a better way. But for now, those are the guidelines that New York State has given us, you know? And I have to say, the city of Batavia has been adhering to it. So we've, we've been awarded little certificates for staying at 100% and providing an equitable assessment role year after year after year, and not all communities can say that.
I'm not sure, is the piece of paper you get for being 100% worth more than dropping it to 90 or 95% and having the people stay?
No, it just, it's this--
Less tax burden on people, especially in COVID.
Yeah. I know. Well, the, the big question is not necessarily the lesser tax burden, it's who's experiencing a lesser or greater tax burden. It's, it's saying that each person, each property is paying its fair share. If you don't equalize to all of those massive sales, like I said, you know, those 300 or 400 people that bought a house this year for $80,000 over the assessment, they're going to continue to pay just the share of the previous assessed value, along with all their other neighbors, where if they have a house that's worth more, they should be actually paying more tax on it. And the only way to do that is to analyze the sales and then adjust to them, so.
And just a reminder for everyone, that the assessed value is not your tax rate. So it is shocking to see larger values, but in this year's budget, which would be last year's reevaluation, we went down from 973 to 894 per $1,000 worth of value. So I know everyone sees sticker shock on their values being much higher, but you have to then do the math of the tax rate on that. And the city continues to be the lowest tax compared to the county and the school. So while it is hard to look and say, gee, I don't think my house might be worth this, I cannot believe people are paying in cash fighting over homes in the city of Batavia, it is happening. But I, you know, that number is not necessarily going to mean a $2,000 tax increase for your city of Batavia taxes. It could mean a $30 increase for your city of Batavia taxes. So I'd just like to point that--
On that assessed value, that's what you pay your school tax, and county tax. So you're paying higher number on, across the board, and you're--
Assessed value affects all three tiers of tax.
Yes, it does. Sometimes the tax rate goes down enough where you actually don't end up actually paying more, or you pay very little more.
So is that the same formula the other entities use when they calculate the cost per thousand?
For $1,000 of assessed value.
It starts at zero, and they do that formula, and then that starts their base rate, and then if they increase the tax levy, then that rate goes up from there? Because, I mean, if you kept the levy the same, the cost per thousand would actually go down because the assessed value went up.
Yes. Yes, that's correct.
Correct?
Yes, that's, that's correct. That's--
So are the other three, I know that's what we do, is that what the county and that what school tax does as well?
They, they have, and I can say, I always explain to people, you should be looking to the Batavia City School District, because they have maintained that 2% tax cap, and the city school rate went from over $24 down to what, 20? 20 and 21? Yeah, so they've done, I have to give them kudos, they have reduced their rate over and over. And think about the tax, total taxable value of just the Batavia City School District, to reduce your rate $3 per thousand times, you know, that, that much is--
Well, it's all, it's all on the tax levy, and it's up to us as a council to try to keep that as low as possible so that it balances out.
Right, that's correct.
Otherwise, if you keep raising taxes and on top of it, raising assessment--
Right.
It becomes out of control, and it's just unbearable for the average person to be able to take that on. So it's--
The tax cap that you, you guys historically have not gone over.
Right.
So that tax cap, use the levy alone.
Right.
And rate.
So mathematically, that drives the tax rate down.
Right. And so I would hope to keep it, I, I would like to see value in homes go up, but yet the total amount they pay in tax go down or stay the same at bare minimum, but at least go down. So then you have value in your homes and a reasonable tax rate, and you have the best of both worlds. I mean, that's, that's what you want.
Yes.
But it doesn't always work that way, and we're still trying to come out of the COVID, and we're still, our tax rate is affected by that a little-- and we're still, our tax rate is affected by that a little bit too. So it's just a lot of burden on a lot of people, and I can understand, like I said, mine went up 15 grand twice last year and this year. So it's hitting everyone pretty hard.
Agreed.
State or no state, or however they're doing it, I'm not pleased with their budget either. I think they're out of control, and that's another discussion that we can have at a later date. But, you know, that's not exactly palatable to me, the way they're spending money like crazy on the other end of the state. So anyone else have anything to ask while we're here? Thank you very much for the time.
You're welcome.
Any committee reports?
Oh, I have two of them.
I don't see any. I missed one, here you go.
Two really good ones. First of all, BID's annual meeting is Tuesday, April 26th at 8:30 in the morning at Generation Center, which is across from the toy store, if you don't know where it is. And you are welcome to go. Just please let me know or let BID know so they know how many people they're having for breakfast. It's a really good time to meet all the owners of properties downtown, which is what it's for, so it would be good to go. The second thing is, GoArt had its annual awards night, and Gina went, and I'm thrilled that he did because it is a big deal to watch how much money New York trusts us with to feed out to symphony orchestras and county bands and art projects and the school for an art show they want to do. Thousands of dollars are passed out, which is just a really big deal. So very proud of GoArt.
And Tammy was there as well, so you know.
Yeah, I'm sorry, and I wasn't. I usually am, but I wasn't this year.
Any other committee reports or any comments?
Yeah, I have a couple of things. One, last week, I don't know who else has been attended, but the high school has Operation Graduation, and it was, I've attended this quite a few years now, but it was really good. I saw a big change in the seniors, and we had a one fellow who's going to become an environmental engineer, he had his career path picked out, had it right down to the money. He's an Eagle Scout. Another young lady is already signed up in the Marine Corps, she's going aviation mechanic school. Family members are Marines, her sister and all that, totally knew what she was doing. Young man, get this, Noah Burke, great young man, and he's already working part-time at the Toyota dealer, studying auto mechanics. And he's fully prepared for it, he's working on cars with a friend of his, and he's in all the electronics and the computers and all the things that none of us here even understand. You know, we write down cars broke, but the challenges, it's just great. And another girl is a hairstylist, another gal was going to LPN school. But it was a big difference over previous years, very well laid out and very organized. The other thing, the parade invitations are starting to go out, I've been sending a few out every day, been getting feedback, actually I've had some people call that want to participate, new people, so we're looking forward to that. And the police chief and fire chief have promised me that they'll take care of everything like in past years, so that's good news. And then today, I don't know if anyone's checked the Batavian, I see JCPenney's has been sold. So that could be good news.
It's okay, I have something. Operation Graduation, you should have each gotten an invitation to participate in it. And it sounds pretty lame to have to go and spend time up there. I was on the group that started this thing. It is incredible because they are given so much to do, and they have the whole year to do, they do it in English, they do it in history, they do it over, and by the time they get through, they've got a career search. It's really, really fabulous. It's worth your time to go, they just ask you to go and listen to it, be their audience. It's really, next time, say yes.
Anything else? Public comments. All speakers should have signed in advance with the clerk. Please state your name and address before beginning your statement. Each speaker will be limited to five minutes. Please address your comments to the chair. Council will not engage in debate with the speaker. On your first bell, it means you have 30 seconds left, and wrap it up because on the second bell, we'll have to stop you.
Is this mic working? It didn't seem to me, it didn't seem to me that the mic was working because after there was a complaint at the beginning of this last presentation, I thought something was done and nothing, I couldn't tell any difference. You can hear me okay? All right, good. My name is Larry Barnes, 55 River Street in Batavia. And as you know, I'm the appointed city historian. I have in my hand right here the job description for this job, and the part that's relevant to my words tonight reads as follows. Quote, "The Batavia City Historian shall engage in historic preservation. This includes preservation of the built environment." Now, an example of a building that deserves preservation, in my judgment, is the Brisbane Mansion at 10 West Main Street, just down the block. The mansion, formerly Batavia City Hall, now its police station, was erected about 1855 as the home of George and Sarah Brisbane. The structure is historically significant, both in terms of the building itself and in terms of the Brisbains who occupied it. When the police department moves to its new facilities, you all, meaning the city council, will be responsible for deciding the future of the mansion. Will it be saved? And if so, what functions will it serve? The more we know about something, the easier it is to come to an appropriate decision. And to this end, last year, I wrote a brief history of the mansion, which I now have in my hand again, mansion and its owners, and I distributed copies to each of you. Now, you weren't here, Tammy, and Rich, you weren't here, so I have with me copies of that report that I'll give you at the end of tonight's session. I know that you will want to hear from local citizens on their views regarding the mansion's future, and I know that you will want them to be fully informed as you seek their input in the decision-making process. To help the public, I'm working with the Landmark Society to present a play. A play on the Brisbains and their mansion. This play will be presented on three occasions in June, and I encourage every one of you to see it. The script has been written by Derek Maxfield, many of you know him well, I think. He's at GCC, and he's a well-known playwright. The cost of the production is being unwritten by a grant administered through GoArt that was some of the money that you were speaking about, Patty. So I want you to be watching for the times and the locations. Again, the times will be in June, locations will be in our community, and I assure you that you will enjoy the production as well as learn some, I think, interesting local history. So thanks for hearing me out. Any questions?
I, for one, I think that was part of the original plan, was to repurpose that building. I have not heard any discussion talking about destroying it. So I think we're already on the path towards, I, for one, would not support destroying the building. So I'm hoping that we stay on that discussion of repurpose as part of the overall exit strategy of leaving that building and either having BDC or someone doing their promotion to try to get another tenant or do something with that building that would keep it in line with its historical significance. So I think that's been the conversation from the beginning, I think. Am I right or wrong?
You're absolutely right.
Oh, you're right. Definitely.
So I think you already have a bunch of willing participants at this point, and I look forward to seeing that parade, or that play, and any other information you can provide. I love the history of it just on its own, so.
And of course, I fully agree with you. Unfortunately, our community had a period of time during which we had no apparent respect for our history, and we lost some pretty incredible buildings. And I would hate to see this one go down in the same manner.
Yeah, I'd like to not repeat those mistakes. If we can avoid that, I would appreciate it.
Thank you again.
Any other comments to Mr. Barnes? Okay, any other people sign up? Okay. Any unfinished business? I don't believe we have any tabled. All right, Resolution 322022, Mr. McGinnis, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution entering to authorize a contract amendment slash six-month extension of the client-first project management agreement.
Seconded by, Mr. Biakowski. Any questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Biakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Bealley?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Canaly?
Yes.
Resolution 332022, Mr. Richmond, please.
No, it's 33, the one up above, the historian. Go ahead.
Seconded by, Mr. Bealley. Any questions or concerns? Okay, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Richmond?
Yes.
Biakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Bealley?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Canaly?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Okay, Resolution 342022, Mr. Schmidt, please.
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to move a resolution to enter into a school resource officer agreement with the City, Batavia City School District for a school resource officer.
Seconded by, Mr. Canaly. Any questions or concerns? Okay, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Biakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Bealley?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Canaly?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Okay. Resolution 352022, Mr. Bealley, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution to create a temporary position of detective.
Seconded by, Ms. Briggs. Any questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Bealley?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Canaly?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Biakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes. Okay.
Whereas Article 7, Section 105-1D of the Public Officers' Law permits the legislative body of a municipality to enter into executive session to discuss proposed pending or current litigation, now therefore be it resolved by the council of the City of Batavia that upon approval of this motion, the city council does hereby enter into executive session.
Seconded by, Ms. Schmidt. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Pacino?
Yes.
Canaly?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Biakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Bealley?
Yes.